All right, good evening, everyone. It's 7:00. I'm going to call the September 9, 2025 meeting that Graham B. Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge to make it just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on our agenda will be Commission check-in. My name is Mark Lockwood. I'm the Commission Chair. And starting by far right.
Eric Lukin Deal, member.
Christine Shinney, member.
Eric Myers, Vice Chair.
Bob Laffitt, member.
Steve Muller, member.
Brennan Shea Han, member.
All the Commission checks in full. We don't need to see the alternates, but I believe Paula Johnson's calling in by Zoom. So hello, Paula.
Hello, Mark.
Okay, next on the agenda is action on the minutes of July the 22nd. I was not here, so the Vice Chair Myers, you had carried the meeting. How did it mean the minutes look to you?
Minutes look great.
Any other comment on the minutes? There's no other comment, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. You have a motion to approve the minutes in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I abstain as well.
Mr. Cheney and Chairman Lockwood abstain. Next, I'd like to add an item for Commission's consideration. Staff has advised me that the Agriculture Commission has appointed someone that'd be considered to be on the Planning, Conservation and Development Commission. That came in since the agenda was published. So I'd like to ask for a motion to add after item number nine, consideration of additional member for their Plan of Conservation and Development Committee.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in second to add that to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We will add that after item number nine.
Excuse me, Chairperson.
Yeah.
I noticed we skipped over number four.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
I'm just trying to get that other one in, so thank you very much.
Yep.
Sorry, I did go over it. So item four is, thanks for keeping me on my toes. It's been a long summer. Public session. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to the Commission about a planning and zoning item not always on the agenda? Please come forward. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, none being heard for public session. We'll close public session, and now we'll move on to public hearings. So as item six, we have three public hearings today. One is a continuation, and that one is an application for a seven-lot subdivision called Breezy Meadow at 188 Day Street, file P-1-25, and it's been continued since July the 22nd. Is the applicant or the representative here?
Yes, sir.
Please come up. Just to introduce yourself again to us with the name and address, please.
Yes, sir. I'm Kirk McNaughton from Peak Mountain Development. My address is 10 Roland Green in East Granby, and I'm here tonight to talk about our seven-lot Breezy Meadows subdivision on Day Street.
Thank you. So the case is a continued hearing, so I know you've gone through this with us on the past meetings. I'll maybe ask Abby to first start from staff to go through what's from your memo, what's been changed, and again, the app can comment on that, but want to go through your staff memo, and of course, you've been commenting on it too.
So at the July meeting, much of the discussion was focused on the streetscape buffer and the proposed vegetation along that area. So the changes from that plan set to the most recent plan set that's in your packet and up on the screen, I've gone ahead and outlined in that in the memo. So first, on lots four and five, the visual streetscape buffer has been increased from 30 feet to 50 feet. The buffer along North Garmby Road has stayed the same, and as previously shown on the other plans, for lot six and seven, the streetscape buffer is much deeper because of that conservation easement. So the change was primarily on lots four and five. On lot four, there were previously no planting shown within the streetscape buffer. This most recent set shows the addition of a lot of planting. So I've gone ahead and outlined them there. Nine bayberry, two eastern redbud, three China girl holly, two china boy holly, six Canadian yew, three copper tina ninebark, and six mountain laurel. And you can see on your plan set the proposed arrangement and configuration of those plantings. Again, on lot five, the previous plan set showed just three red sunset maples. So in addition to those three maples, there have been some additional plantings added, the two china boy holly, six china girl holly, three eastern redbud, 15 Canadian yew, six mountain laurel, three American cranberry viburnum, and five bayberry. For lots six and seven, there were some changes to the buffer and the plantings. So the Commission had some concern or questioned the size of some of the plantings. So on lot six, 11 Norway spruce that were 18 inches were removed and swapped out for 12 overall plantings. Nine balsam fir that are 18 inches, and then three of the swipe swat swamp white oak, 1 and 1/2 inch to 2-inch caliper, which I believe the swipe swamp white oak was mentioned during the last meeting as something that should be considered. And then on lot seven, 13 trees were removed and 10 added. So again, the 18 tall, 18-inch tall Norway spruce removed, 18-inch tall five bayberry, and in exchange, five swamp white oak, 1 and 1/2 to 2-inch caliper were added. So again, a little bit of a larger tree, five bayberry, and then the two balsam fir. So again, that was in response to some of the questions the Commission had about the streetscape buffer. There were no other changes to the plans aside from increasing the depth of the buffer on those two lots, and then changing out some of the plantings, and then adding some plantings that I just went through.
Do you concur with that, sir?
Yes, Abby, you know, pretty much just gave you my presentation.
Oh, she had done it, so I wanted her to just run through it, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to run through it again if you like, you know.
If you maybe, since you have the diagram up there, want to let it just show us visually what Abby just said, I think that might help walk us through it.
Okay, so, yeah, right, I guess, you know, previously, in our previous meetings, we did probably cover most everything that you would be interested in, except for we did leave the streetscape buffer as an as an open item. And so, again, let's let's start with the lots number six and seven. This didn't really change very much at all, except that we had, I think we had 28 Norway spruce in there, and it was between those two lots, lot six and seven, I think we had 28 Norway spruce proposed, and we replaced it. Some of the discussion was that the Norway spruce weren't a native plant here in Connecticut, so one of the things we did was we changed to a balsam fir for 20 of those. So between lot six and seven, we replaced 20 Norway spruce with 20 balsam fir, and then we added eight of the swamp white oak in lieu of the eight other Norway spruce. So at the end of the day, we had 28 trees and shrubs there, and we still have the 28 trees and shrubs there. And nothing else really changed in that, you know, in that area. It's got the deep, the deep visual landscape buffer. You know, this, a lot six, it's about 125 feet, and on lot seven, it's about 130 feet deep. And that's pretty much it with lot six and seven. We really didn't do too much else there. And on lot number four and five, as described, we had, here, we increased the streetscape buffer. It was originally proposed 30 feet, now 50 feet. Our original plan didn't have any plantings in this area, because this is already heavily wooded, so originally, we thought that was sufficient. But, you know, the Commission, you folks, had asked us to add some more. So in here on this lot, I think we added something like, here, 20, I think we added 28, yeah. On lot four, we added 28 mixed plantings of trees and shrubs, including three eastern rosebud trees. And then over here on lot number five, we had a little bit, like, we had a little bit less of the existing woods, which shows here, and we added a few more trees and shrubs there on lot number five. We put 34 trees and shrubs there, including three of these sunset red maples and three of the rose, eastern rosebud tree, which is a flowering, you know, flowering landscape tree. So, yeah, that's that's pretty much it. We just added the extra shrubs, made the landscape buffer larger. And all of these shrubs that we had put in would be considered native to the area. There was a comment on the Commission from the Commission that we should try to do that, and we've done that. So, and we also, on lots four and five, again, there was a suggestion that the shrubs that we plant be a larger, a larger size, and we've done that on lots four and five. They're a three-gallon variety as opposed to something smaller, and that's a pretty good-sized shrub to be planted. So, you know, we hope that you feel like we've addressed your concerns with respect to the visual streetscape buffer, and, you know, I think that this will be a pretty good plan. Happy to answer any questions you have about this or anything else, really.
I have a couple of questions. Do you have a plan for watering the trees in the time after they're planted?
The the answer to that is yes and no. Yes, we recognize the need for that, and we will be watering them during that timeframe. The specifics of that plan haven't been, you know, fully materialized, but it could be as simple as one of our landscapers has a watering truck and, you know, have it show up and water as on a as-needed basis based on rainfall and what have you.
So when are they, when do you intend to plant them? It's going to be fall?
Right away.
Right away.
Yeah, one of the requirements is these plantings have to be done before we request a building permit, so we're doing it right away.
Okay, so you're going to plant them right away, plant them this fall, and so you're going to plan to water them for one season or more than one season?
No, just this one season until they take, after that, they'll be, you know, if they need, if they do need watering, there'll be homes and homeowners there with, you know, water on site. But right now, well, there's no homes, we need to, you know, make sure they get off to a good start.
Okay, so your assumption is that after the first season, the homeowner will take care of the trees?
If needed. If needed.
If needed?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a question about, you've got a number of plants on here which are going to be 18 inches tall.
Yes.
Based upon my own personal experience with planting 18-inch tall shrubs and trees, the surrounding vegetation often grows taller than 18 inches, and it effectively kind of shades them out, makes it tough for them to thrive. Or do you have any plans for mowings around these 18-inch plantings so that they don't get, so that they don't lose sunlight, don't lose air circulation?
Well, the 18-inch ones, the 18-inch shrubs are on lot number six and seven, and at the time that they get planted, they will be mulched, and, you know, hopefully that will keep, you know, that's going to keep the the grass down to a degree. And we do have to go in, in the area that we're planting, we are doing an invasive species mitigation plan in that area as well prior to doing the planting. So hopefully, you know, we'll keep the existing growth down, and, you know, the shrubs that we plant will take, and the mulching will keep that other stuff down. But it's an area that, once we touch it, once we do it, it's being identified and reserved as a no-touch area, right? So it's, you know, by the letter of the law, we're not able to go in and maintain that. We're going to leave it to go back natural.
Okay. If a plant, if a plant dies after you plant it, is there a program for going in and replacing it?
We do plan to do that, yes.
For how long a period of time?
Well, probably just the one season, like, something we plant this year, you know, we'll look at it a year from now, like, so I'm saying we're going to plant these in 2025. We'll look at it again at the end of 2026, and anything that's that needs to be replaced, we'll replace. So for basically one year.
Okay.
Beyond that, it's going back natural. It's a buffer area.
Okay, you're, tell me about your invasive mitigation program. How does that work?
Well, it's spelled out in detail in the building plan itself. I think it's on page 11. It's about a three-page plan, so, you know, it's there in writing. We're just going to follow that. It's a plan that was required by the wetlands commission as part of their approval.
Follow, and they were, so they've already approved?
They've already approved it. It's in part of the plan, so.
Okay, all right. I apologize for taking your time with it.
And that's sheet notes, too, if I don't have a sense of tickle of that.
Okay, all right. Okay, I don't think I have any more questions right now. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you.
For clarification, Abby, for mine, on other subdivision stuff and other site plans in general, is, can, what's, you know, what's the requirement to maintain vegetation dies?
Yeah, so typically, at time of CO, we will look to make sure that the vegetation is still in a healthy state, and that's something that we would look for on, for this, if it should be approved. But truthfully, beyond that, in terms of enforcing whether or not vegetation continues to live on private property, that's.
But it's up to the CO time. It's part of the segment.
Yep.
Okay, that's all.
Yep.
Other questions, Chris?
I was just curious, on lot seven, that you removed bayberry and then basically put it back. My understanding is that bayberry is considered an invasive. Am I correct about that?
Well, I'll answer, I'll answer it a couple ways, I think. With respect, I, I think, Abby, when you looked at the plan, I think that we actually didn't remove, I think we didn't actually didn't remove and then replace with a three-gallon. I think that all the three gallons are on lots number four and five, and the bayberry that was there is still there.
So, yeah.
But it's, but I've been, I've been informed that that's a non-invasive or a native plant, not an invasive plant. That's my understanding, is all the plants in the, in the planting plan, perhaps with the exception of the swamp white oak, are all native species.
I checked the UConn list and didn't see.
It's native.
Bayberry on that.
You're thinking barberry, probably.
Yes.
Not bayberry.
He's right. I think he's barberry.
Right.
You're testing me, you know, I'm not really an expert in some of those stuff.
Well.
The particular section here.
I just, I just Googled it.
Yeah.
Bayberry may spread aggressively via rhizomatous growth and display allelopathic effects. This plant may become weedy or invasive in some regions or habitats, and may displace desirable vegetation if not properly managed.
But it's native to this area?
Yes, it is.
So.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions. I think the application's ready.
Okay. We received a letter with, in a butter, with a few questions. The proposed public accessway, refresh my recollection, because it's been a long summer, that's, that's not a road, is it?
No, no, no.
No, it's just a footpath.
It's, yeah, it's a footpath.
Not even a footpath.
It's up here.
Yeah.
This, you know, leading from where it's, where the word root is, versus Route 189, heading in a southerly direction to the large open space area. It's wooded, it's going to stay that way. There's no intent of, of building a path or a roadway or an accessway. It's just a wood, I think it's 20-foot wide, path to get to the open space, just going to remain natural.
Okay. I know that this historically apparently was a hayfield. Have we ever watered soil testing for agricultural contaminants?
That's not in our.
It's not in our purview. Okay, well, that answers that, because I didn't remember us ever doing it.
That's the answer, the planning zoning doesn't have, that's not part of our charter, charge or jurisdiction. That would be Farmington Valley Health.
That's right.
Wells and other agencies, am I correct?
There was a concern.
It's got to be in the right book.
Yeah, okay.
So we're not discounting the comment, it's just not something we can address.
Okay. Nothing further?
I have nothing at this time.
Good.
Anything else before the mission? Anything else, sorry? Before we open up the public comment? It's fine.
You'll have to be back up.
Well, yeah, you come back. So at this time, any member of the public would like to speak with this application, please come forward.
Good evening. Mark Gottlieb, 105 Silver Street, North Granby, and I've got three minor points I want to talk about. I do understand the P&amp;Z's view with respect to environmental, but I will give you my comments anyway. I'm a retired Connecticut licensed environmental professional with 30 years of experience in assessment and remediation, extensive experience on agricultural properties, and some of those here in Granby. So this particular property, the current recent uses have been hayfields, but if we look at historic aerial photos for this site, which go back to 1934, site has been continuously in agricultural use from '34 to the present, so possibly more than 100 years of agricultural use. I think the developers remiss in not supplying a Phase 1 assessment for the site. It only takes one year of pesticide application to create a problem, and at that point, we end up with houses being built on contaminated soils, windage and stormwater transport of contaminated soils, et cetera. I think to dismiss it as totally being hayfields, that's certainly true for time within recent memory, whether what happened in the '30s, '40s, '50s, early '60s, and before that's unknown. Generally, a Phase 1 is conducted on a site like this. Next point. Can we put the site plan back up, or is that possible?
I guess, sure.
So if you look at the rain garden on lot one, it's not clear to me, I couldn't find any calculations in there, that the thing is adequately sized for what might be received. It's not very deep. Looks to be about a foot and a half deep, in close proximity to the southeast property of Butter, and if that thing overflows, it's very clearly going into someone else's yard. Maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, but I think a demonstration that we've got the capacity under extreme stormwater event that we're not going to have a flood issue onto that particular lot. My third point's probably out of your realm, but I'll make it anyway, which is the intersection of Day Street and 189 is less than ideal intersection, as everybody knows. And really, the only shot for realignment of that intersection in the future is the northwest edge of proposed lot three. And that's just something to consider. That intersection clearly could use to be redone, and that really, that particular strip along there is the only viable option for fixing that in the future. Again, maybe in your realm, maybe not. I'm not a traffic guy. And that pretty much covers my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana Warren of 10 Day Street Salad. I wanted to just start my comments this evening with how some of my previous comments were responded to, just requesting some clarity. I had previously made a comment about 3.2.5 in the subdivision regulations about the perpendicular lot lines, and that the, could we see the plan again, please? That the regulation calls for perpendicular lots, lot lines, and when the comment was addressed, there was discussion that these lots are big enough, or that the lot square fits in it, so that the lot lines, sort of as a dismissal for why the lot lines don't have to be perpendicular to the street, and I just would like some clarity on that, because I'm not understanding in the regulation where that is an exception. So that's one point. My next point would be, similarly, on the contiguous developable area 3.2.7.1 talks about the required square footage within each property outside of wetlands, outside of grades over 20%. And the response to my question, particularly on lot four, I believe it is, is that the house was placed on the steepest grade so that they could have a walkout basement. And again, I'm simply asking for clarity, where in the regulation is there an exception for walkout basements from the contiguous developable area? Not, the contiguous developable area needs to be outside of the wetlands and the steep slopes. Again, it was 3.2.7.1. And to my prior point, these regulations could be met if there were less lots. There's, there's nothing saying that we need to accept compromise in order for somebody to maximize the number of houses on a property. I'm also interested in hearing the, a butter's letter. I wasn't, I don't know if my hearing was right. If the letter was read, I'm just curious what the butter had said, but my question would be, why is the access to the public space against an existing butter as opposed to between, in between new lots, that instead of somebody who bought into a community not of an accessway, I would think that you would want the people buying into their properties knowing they have an accessway as opposed to putting that on an existing neighbor, an existing butter? Check my list. So I think my summary is, and also to the comment of the prior speaker, is there was, I'm not sure if you're all aware, there was a livestock call the last few days at this intersection again, and traffic was balled up for quite a while there while they dealt with the urgency. So it does actually spark thoughts about, could there be potential concern in the future for the town to want to rearrange that section, because it's a notoriously dangerous intersection? So anyhow, in summary, my points are simply that it seems like there's a lot of, eh, kind of close enough, but not quite there, givings being had here, just because so many lots are here. You know, shared driveways are not, not preferred, they're avoided, but technically, it said that, the applicant said that they meet the regulation, which I had not checked myself, but these, these lot lines, the lot contiguous buildable area. So there's a number of items. I'd like to see us have a little bit more clarity on, please.
Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom? Other comments, have any applicant back up?
If I, we did receive the letter that was.
Oh, yeah, the letter that was referenced, it was this in the, in the packet, it's posted on the.
It was distributed to the Commission because it was retrieved after.
Did you see that?
Yeah.
You have copy of somebody wants it.
Yes.
So there's a copy of the letter available from staff. Before we start on this stat, you know, the Commission talks about following regulations, which we have to, Abby, there was a comment made during the public hearing about perpendicular lot lines.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe you want to comment on that, because I know that was discussed.
Yes.
The engineers looked at that, and you really want to comment?
Yep. Yep, so the regulations states that lot lines shall generally be at right angles to street lines, so in looking at. So in looking at the plans that were presented, it's up to the commission to interpret whether or not those lot lines are generally at right angles. It was staff's opinion that it complied with the regulation. But certainly, if that's something you'd like to discuss or look at further.
And I believe we had covered that ground in the last meeting and agreed that they generally, for all purposes, were right angles.
You.
I chaired the meeting. We had good discussion and we sent the applicant back to do some additional homework, but we were satisfied that the lots were acceptable.
The regulations on it has to be 90 degrees generally.
Generally.
Generally. So the engineering feels it was in line and the commission last meeting feels, I mean, I've looked at the plans. They are generally perpendicular. They may be 89 degrees instead of 90, but I don't have a protractor. And then with the other regulations, comments 3.2.7.1? Do you want to touch that?
Yep, so contiguous developable area states all lots created through subdivision or re-subdivision shall contain a contiguous developable area equal to at least 35,000 square feet in the R-50 zone and 30,000 square feet in the R-30 zone. And it goes on to state that the contiguous developable area shall be defined as an uninterrupted contiguous area, which does not contain wetlands, watercourses, water bodys or areas with slopes in excess of 20% that extend 50 linear feet or more. That, on the page one of the plan set, the lot summary table has all of the lots. It shows the zoning compliance table and the contiguous developable area in square feet is the last column. So you can see on all lots that it complies with the regulation.
So.
The minimum is 30,000 square feet and the lowest here is 38,566.
So the plans that have been submitted and reviewed by engineering meet the regulations?
Yes, and that was something specifically that we asked them to add and look at in the plan set, which we then analyzed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Which is, anything you'd like to comment on from?
Well, I mean, I think you guys already had talked about the gentleman who spoke, talked about, you know, doing an environmental study, but you already addressed that, I believe. There was a comment regarding the size of the rain garden. I said, have you done any environments? I'm just curious. No, 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 we haven't. It's been held by the Longley family for almost 100 years and they've told me that it's only been a hayfield all that time. But I have not done anything on that. There was a question about the, perhaps the stormwater calculations with respect to the rain garden on Lot Number 1. However, that's, all those calculations have been done by my engineer. They have been submitted to the town. They have been reviewed by the town engineer. All of the rain gardens and all the stormwater drainage has been approved by the town engineer. We've met all the standards and requirements on that. So even though it may look small, I mean, we have very pervious soil on this site. Some of the best drained soil that I've really ever seen anywhere, which, you know, maybe might lead somebody to a conclusion that it's small, but the ground is very accepting of water.
Is that correct?
Yes, the town engineer has reviewed all the stormwater calculations and he has confirmed that the plans comply with the regulations.
And, you know, both these folks that spoke talked about the intersection there of Day Street and North Granby Road. But, you know, that's an existing intersection and our property is not even the corner property there. If you, well, if you could put up that other plan back up there, there's another house on the corner right here. You know, so if anything was to be done with the intersection, that really wouldn't have anything to do with our property, per se, in any event. No, otherwise. Let me just take a look here. No, I think otherwise that's it. I mean, our, you know, the plan we submitted, we've been working on this with the town for several months and, you know, been reviewed by the town engineer and kind of turned inside out all different ways. I think we've met all the requirements of the regulations and addressed all the questions and requests and concerns of all the commissions. So, you know, I feel pretty good like we've done what you guys have asked us to do. And our plans do meet all the subdivision regulations.
Any other questions from the commission?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I very much appreciate the efforts you've gone to respond to our comments about the plantings. I think you've made a really good effort here.
Thank you.
I think it's going to work. Until tonight, I don't think anybody suggested that there ought to have been a Phase One done. I'm just asking, would you have a problem doing a Phase One to assure the neighborhood and any particular purchaser that there's, you know, no, nothing in the ground that's going to affect the health and safety of the people who are going to buy the houses? Would you be willing to do it?
Well, I think frankly, it's not a requirement of the subdivision regulations. It's not a requirement of the town. It's not something that this commission has historically asked for or as the chairman indicated, really has the, I don't know if it's not the right to ask for, but it's not something that they asked for. So, you know, we've been going through this process a long time. I think asking for something like that at this late hour would be, you know, very unfair. You know, I'd say no. I don't think that I would be willing to do that. I don't think it's necessary.
If we asked you to do it, would you do it?
Well, you put it that way. I mean, you could force me, I guess, to do whatever you want to do. But, I mean, I don't think it would be fair.
Just want to ask a question, Eric, before. I'm going to ask Abby, going to defer to somebody's. For a CO, you have to have a well that works, correct? And does that well have to be tested by Farmington Valley? Is there a testing requirement?
Yes, there, yes, there is.
So if the person building these houses doesn't do his due diligence and builds houses and has wells that fail, he's wasting a lot of his money or her money. Is that safe to say?
I think it's safe to say also that there's numerous residents all the way around. You can see the individual homes all the way around this property. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, probably another half dozen on the other side of the road that have existing wells that don't have any issues. You know, I think my supposition would be if there was a problem with the water, the water table here or the aquifer here, that it would perhaps be shown to be that way elsewhere as well.
And Eric, I agree. I think it's important, but also I think that he's got to get his wells tested. And if he builds this without testing, then he's kind of going under risk.
Well, you have to, in order to get a CO, you have to do, you have to test the water and provide the Farmington Valley Health District with clean, with clean water, or otherwise you can't get the CO. So, I mean, that's, that's really the way it is.
Seems to me if you do the testing now, you get the answer right away.
Well, you talked about two different things. You can't test the well water until you drill the well.
No, but you can test, you can do a Phase One. You can test the soil.
No, there's no provision in the subdivision regulations.
So not only is there no provision, we've approved, I've lost count of how many subdevelopments we've done in the past few years and it's not something we've opposed, so.
Most recently, Harness Way was.
Correct.
Yeah, we didn't do that for Harness Way.
Copper, Copper Brook.
Yep.
So we're on slippery, slippery slope here.
I'm not comfortable proposing something.
It's not within our charge.
It's not within our charge, particularly in this.
It's a valid point. I take it. Again, I wouldn't want to build houses if I didn't have the water or some kind of testing. So that's the applicant in Farmington Valley Health is the check here, right? They're going to, I mean, that's why you see some other towns that have had problems. They have had municipal water systems.
In areas that have been designated already as a hazard.
Well, it's a valid point by the public, but I agree. I don't think it's, it's not in our regulation or something we can oppose. The applicant is not receptive to it. But I respect Eric, what you're saying. Other comments?
I'm all set.
On this subject, we're getting, so just going through the comments we have from the regulation side, town engineers looked at and staffs.
Correct.
It's addressed now. You have some draft approval notes, Abby? Have those been shared with the applicant?
They have, yes.
Are you familiar with that?
Yes, sir.
Are you okay with those draft approvals if the commission solidifies that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One question I had, Abby, and I wasn't at the last meeting, is item four. I'm not quite sure about these placards. I'm not so sure. If I owned a home, I'd like to have signs in my front yard. If I wanted to cut down the trees later on, you know, because I wanted to put different tray or dyes. So I'm just curious about that. Is that, is that in our regulation?
So that was a requirement from the Wetlands Commission for the Wetlands Conservation Easement area. So that's a question for this commission. If you also want to have the streetscape area marked either on existing or proposed vegetation, so folks know where that is. Or if you don't want that, then that's.
I agree with the wetland side of it. I just, I don't think we've done that at any other housing development in the town, but we could have that as.
I think Harness Way, they have placards in the back.
For wet.
No.
For the conservation.
For the conservation easement.
We could discuss that, so.
Yeah, so if, yeah, in that case, you could just leave it to the conservation restriction area and just remove, because then the streetscape buffer would be the remaining lots.
Okay. I'm just trying to avoid future issues where somebody does something and causes more trouble, especially if they want to change out a tree or something. Once it's private property, it's the town out of it. But we want to preserve the wetlands, that's for sure.
Hey, other, other questions?
Yep.
The only, I guess, other concern I have is with the hazard of the intersection there is maybe just pay attention to towards construction, loading and unloading. Make it easier, because that's quite a corner around there.
It is.
It seems to me that if the town or whoever is responsible for that intersection ultimately decides they want to make a change, they have the police power to take the property and, you know, if they have to demolish a house, they can demolish a house. I mean, it's certainly in their power to do so. May cost a little more money, but I don't think we can hold up development saying, well, maybe 20 or 30 years from now, the town will get around to fix the intersection. There's no, you know, it would be different if we had a letter saying, you know, we're about to fix that intersection. People warned.
We had to double that here?
Yeah.
You know, who's going to be on the going?
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be the state that'd fix that?
But it's a local road going into, but yeah.
Unfortunately, there's several bad intersections in town that are actually in the plan of conservation and development. And I think I agree. It'd be nice if somebody said, we're going to fix it. But there's no plans that the Board of Selectmen have advised us on nor has State DOT made any inclination that they're looking to improve any of the intersections so far. It's nice for planning purposes, I'd like to see that, but I, you know, don't see it in, you know, property owners. Again, it's not something we have reserved in the regs and we haven't been asked by the selectmen or any of those other parties.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a reasonable basis for altering. I agree with you that I'd like to see that intersection improved, but it's not like this, don't let them do this because we're planning to take that. We don't have anything like that before.
Anything else you'd like to add before we?
No, sir. No, I'm, I figured we made our presentation.
Abby, anything else before we?
No.
Commission, anyone?
No.
Eric?
No, I'm fine. Thank you very much.
All right, nothing being said, we're okay to close, Abby?
Yes.
We're going to close the public hearing tonight. The commission has up to 65 days to make a decision. There'll probably be discussion later on in the agenda here. Thank you very much. Thank you, members of the public, for your comments as well. Okay, next is a new public hearing for an amendment to zoning regulations in the industrial zone for event space. Vice Chair Myers, could you read the call to the hearing, please?
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P&amp;Z on Tuesday, September 9, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road. The hearing consider the following item. Application seeking an amendment to zoning regulations, Section 3.8 Industrial Zone to add Section 3.8.2.1.9 for event space allowed by special permit file Z-15-25. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the Community Development Office.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you? That was a lot.
That's why he gets to read it. Will you just introduce yourself and name and address, please?
Sure, my name is Alan Koachman. I live at 1 Pheasant Run, Windsor, Connecticut. I am applying for, as stated, regulation change to add proposal regulation 3.8.2.1.9, special event facility. And under the shoes, I would use it for, excuse me for looking at my phone. I want to make sure.
Oh, no, no, no.
I'm not wasting your time. I want to make sure. If I would use it as networking events, business meetings, weddings, birthday gatherings, pay parties, conferences, meetings, presentations, social gatherings, et cetera. And if approved, I would apply for a special permit for 518 Salmon Brook Street, Unit Number 4 in Granby. I'm complete with that. Thank you.
Just for, you know, you've seen, obviously, our regulations doesn't allow for it. You see the need for that? Does it carbonize in with the existing zone? Have you seen any conflicts with uses or assume not?
I did.
This facility, our staff's added the word special event facility. Be there.
Right.
You see it just as a facility? It's not going to be, the intent would be just a space, right? Not kitchens and not.
That's correct, sir, yes.
Okay, not a bar?
No.
Okay. Maybe something for temporary, but it wouldn't be open 24?
No, no, sir.
We have your narrative here, too. Abby, comments from your side from the text amendment?
Yeah, so similar to how the commission considered the addition of a special or a personal service as a special permit in the industrial zone, this is targeted to the same property. But of course, when the commission approves a regulation change, it applies to all properties within that zone. So as the applicant explained, this is looking to add a new use to the industrial zone. And in fact, we don't currently have this use anywhere in the zoning regulations. And I first went through the regulations to see if there was a similar use that we could just mirror the language and pull that into the industrial zone for the commission's consideration. But there really isn't anything like this currently in the regulations. So as was explained, this would be to add a new special permit use. So the new proposed language would be a special event facility, which is a facility for banquets, conferences, receptions, meetings, presentations, parties, cultural, education, corporate, charitable or other social gatherings. So again, it's different from a restaurant because it doesn't have a kitchen. It would, it's really just an open space that can be rented out for private functions and events. And again, this would be by a special permit, so the commission could determine which locations in the industrial zone would be appropriate for this use. Because certainly not all properties may be, but some could be.
Yes. Especially if you get some more use out of these when people are changing, more remote people conferences and things and.
Yeah. And I just want to note, too, as it's drafted here, it's a little cumbersome. So in the future, when we look at redoing the regulations, pulling out kind of the definition portion of that into Section 1.5 of the definitions. But that would be for another day and another consideration by the commission.
Not an issue there, Abby.
Correct.
He could stress that.
Right.
I mean, I suppose we could, if the applicant is okay, we could do both.
I mean, I suppose we could, if the applicant is okay, we could do both, right? We could just call it a special event facility and take this and make the definition now.
And I was thinking about that, but we didn't advertise it as a change to Section 1.4.
Okay. Eric. Okay. Is this Unit Four, the store that was most recently the kind of game center?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, okay.
And I think it's, for me, it's straightforward. I don't really have any questions outside the definition, so it's a procedure administrative for later. Any commissioners have questions?
Do we have any concept, I'm sorry, do you have any concept of how much traffic it would generate, I mean, in terms of like parking in the lot? I mean, I've never had any trouble parking in that lot.
So that would be, come with the special permit application, but parking requirements, they would not change because it would be associated with a retail, commercial, shopping center use, so they don't break out the uses individually. But certainly, you know, I anticipate that'll be a question during the special permit process.
So it would be limited for the size of the people that are allowed in, the size of the building, the amount of people that are allowed.
Square footage of the building.
Correct.
That's not a huge space.
Right. In fact, it's called special event, to me, means it's not long term, so it's not going to have Company A's conference facility for two years in there.
Right.
Is that correct, sir?
That is correct, sir.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at the other approved uses in that, that zone, I mean, there are a lot of things that I would less like to have in there, like a terracotta tile factory is one of the listed uses, and it's gross.
I have to admit, I was kind of thinking the same thing compared to some of the other uses that we already allow, and so it's pretty innocuous.
If there's no other questions, I'll open any member of the public, we should speak about this text amendment change, please come forward. Anyone on Zoom? Hey, none being seen? Nothing else from staff?
I think we just, we skipped over, but this did go to Crog, and it did go to North, Northwest Hills, and they both had no issue.
Correct.
For the record.
Anything else you wish?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
No, no, if you're done.
No, I'm good. Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll close the public hearing. The commission has up to 65 days to make a decision, but we'll be discussing it later on our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. 6C, application seeking to modify special permit for garage in excess of 1,000 square feet. Vice Chair Myers, you can read the call to the hearing, please.
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P and Z on Tuesday, September 9, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road. The hearing consider the following item. Application seeking to modify a special permit under zoning regulations, Section 8.1.3.4 for a garage in excess of 1,000 square feet to construct an overhang for property located at 10R Eric Drive, R30 Zone. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the Community Development Office.
Is the applicant? Yeah. Bob Rodrick, 10 Eric Drive. Abby's memo are the main, the main points. I think for me, the key things are, it's, the building still meets all the setbacks, and Kate and Wetlands signed off on it, so that made me feel good. I'd like to add that when Morton put the building up, I was there every day watching the construction, pretty impressed. I've been working on the building since March, since it went up, and everything about it impressed me. When they built the building, I asked them to reinforce the east wall, which is where the overhang will be. So they put headers in to, to support their construction of an overhang. At that time, I wasn't sure how I was going to do it, if I was going to do it, but now I decided I'm going to do it, and I'm going to have them do it. So something I feel good about, it's ready for them to come and put it in, hoping to get the same crew back, too. So that's where we are. I have some renderings which might help you visualize it. I don't know if I made enough copies. I probably did, but I passed these around. So this shows what the overhang will actually look like. It's completed. It's going to match everything on the building, siding, the roof, the gutter, everything. I recessed it, you can see, I pushed it in a little bit, so it's not quite 40 feet. I thought the look would look better if the fascia on the front was not even with the front of the building, so you can see it's kind of pushed back. I thought it looked shorter. It's good.
Yeah.
So it's basically an umbrella. So I'm going to use it to store, well, trailer, we'll get parked under it, and then attachments for a tractor, things that I don't have on it at the time, at this time. It looks like a logical extension.
Abby, things good then from Wetland's side and staff's side?
Yes, yeah, it was in the upland review area, so the Wetlands agent did review it and sign off on the modification. So the applicant is all set from that standpoint. When the garage was constructed initially, the commission had a condition about screening from the neighbor, and those plans have gone in, and this lean to is on the other side, so further from the neighbor.
I can, I can talk about shrubs, too. And I spoke to, I believe, three letters went out?
To your neighbors.
To your neighbors?
Yep.
I said three. I talked to them all. Told them it was coming.
So that's good. The commission has always encouraged that. Our last chair and Commissioner Luke can be all those toys, the Granby way?
Yeah, that's right.
I, I don't have, I think it's a logical extension, looks nice.
Yep, thank you.
No questions?
No questions.
Concrete pad?
I'm sorry?
Concrete pad?
No.
Stone?
Maybe in the future, but right now, I'm done with concrete people. Yeah. Yeah, I'll just put gravel for now. Yeah, I think the picture shows concrete.
What did you end up doing for heat?
I'm sorry?
What'd you end up doing for heat in that shop?
Sunshine.
Okay. I know you discussed it, but I don't know what you ended up with.
All right, looks straightforward, is a good addition. You got the Wetlands pool, so I don't have anything else if nobody else is.
Ask any members of the public, like to speak on this application? Anyone on Zoom? I don't see, I don't see anything else, Abby, I think it's good.
Appreciate you coming back to us, it's good to get this approved now instead of worrying about it later after you build it, so.
Okay, so what would the timing be for getting that permit?
Well, so we have to vote on it for.
Well, yeah.
So you're assuming, you know.
Morton's sitting there, you know.
No, so, so no, we're going to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Officially, we have 65 days, we were going to discuss it tonight, so you should find out this evening, and then after that, you can talk to Abby.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right.
We're going to close that public hearing, as of this date, the commission has 65 days to make its decision, but we'll be discussing it later on in the agenda. All right. Item number seven, receive applications and schedule public hearing?
Oh, we don't currently have anything to receive.
Oh, okay.
So something that I do want to point out, though, that's a little bit different, because we are moving to one meeting a month, because the second regular meeting is going to be the P O C D. If we receive an application with enough time for us to submit a notice to the current, is the commission okay if we still, we run the notice in the current, so then the night, the same night it's technically received would be the night that the public hearing opens? So like, if we receive an application this week, I would like to be able to run notice in the Hartford Current and have it, the public hearing at the first meeting in October.
That's right, because the statute, our official meetings are still there, so the clock starts from that anyway, so that's fine.
Okay.
I just looked, and since we have some, I see our, our friends from Land Trust for item nine, would the commission object if I reorder the agenda, another reordering to have that next, and then we'll consider applications? Is that okay? Without objection? So I know you folks have been waiting, so we're going to skip to nine, and we'll do eight next. We're going to consider requests by the Granby Land Trust to accept dedicated open space instead of fee in lieu of open space for 120, 126, and 132 Silver Street.
I'm going to recuse myself from this one, as I am on the board of directors of the Granby Land Trust.
Paula, would you like to sit in since Eric's recusing?
I'm also a board member, so.
Oh, that's right. Okay, never mind, forgot.
Thank you, Luke.
Good evening. My name is Rick Orlick, and I'm the volunteer president of the Granby Land Trust. I live at 106 Higley Road. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Granby Land Trust in conjunction with the Land Trust's prospective purchase of 120, 126, and 132 Silver Street. We've entered into a contract to purchase these lots, which abut the existing 150 acres Seth and Lucy Holcomb preserved. Lucy and Seth Holcomb always hope to see this land preserved, as it provides diverse wildlife habitat and protects the viewscapes from the Holcomb Preserve they so generously donated in 2016. These lots will be integrated into the GLT's current Seth and Lucy Holcomb Preserve, creating a connected 250-plus acre swath of protected, ecologically important land on the Silver Street, Lewis Street ridgeline. These lots are part of a 2007 subdivision approval, at which time a lien was recorded requiring the payment of a fee in lieu of open space should they be sold and developed. By acquiring these lots, the GLT will permanently preserve them as open space. As you know, the underlying fee in lieu of open space is to compensate the town for lost open space opportunities created through development. In this instance, however, no such loss will occur, instead, the parcels to be owned by the Land Trust will remain as open space, protected forever. With this in mind, we respectfully request that the commission vote to not require the payment of the fee in lieu of open space for this transaction, as the land will be transferred to the Granby Land Trust. Thank you for your work and consideration, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Just before we start, I just, since this was an older application or arrangement, I just wanted to make sure the commission had authority to go back and retroactively do this. Abby and staff did check with the town attorney and confirm that, so just want to get that procedurally out of the way that we are able to go back and look at this retroactively. So Abby, just from a town perspective, you maybe want to comment, because it's a change from the fee to that, and any opinions from the towns?
Right. Yeah, so if this application were to be considered today, the proposed dedicated open space does comply with the subdivision regulations, so Granby Land Trust is one of the entities recognized as being eligible or able to receive open space under the regulations. And certainly, the total area of land to potentially be purchased by the Granby Land Trust, if it were to be dedicated open space under the regulations, it exceeds the 20% that would be required, so it does comply with the regulations, which is obviously important in considering the change from the fee in lieu of open space to the dedicated open space. So there are no concerns with it complying with the regulations from that end.
And just, I know the answer to this, but I have to ask that the Land Trust can't sell that later for, it has to stay in open space?
Correct.
It's deed restricted? Is that correct, Mr. Orlick?
Yes, well, we could sell it, but we will, we will never sell it. So we have never been in a position to do that, and are answering from a transparency standpoint. This is a purchase, and we haven't made a commitment to a donor, but we're going to add it to the Seth and Lucy Holcomb Preserve, which is forever preserved, so there would be no instance where that would be the case. I think it would be a failure of our responsibility to the community as to what we're about.
So that's just confusing to me, just because if this is, our requirement requires it to be given to open space and it can't be sold, so that's counterintuitive to what you just said.
You shouldn't be allowed to sell it, like, that's why I was asking, is it deed restricted?
Right, so it'd have to be dedicated open space to the Granby Land Trust.
Then you can't sell it.
Right. Well, it's, we're, what are you asking me?
And so you're saying it would be part of the Holcomb?
Yes, it is going to be, as I, as I indicated, it's going to become part of the Seth and Lucy Holcomb Preserve, so it will never be sold.
It just has to be, I know the Land Trust doesn't, but something changes and you, you know, you get taken over by a coup and somebody wants to sell it.
Right.
They can't because it's, it's supposed to be open space for the town, right?
Yes.
You're designated, so I don't know if there's something on the deed that says if it's no longer open space, it goes, I'm trying to remember my law school, fee subject to determinable, whatever it is, so I don't know if that's what's done.
Yeah, I think the way, the way it's conveyed includes that restriction, that's what I understand.
And so we could talk with the town attorney to make sure that.
Yeah. I know you're not going to do it, but we're just, I just have to.
Yeah, no, no, I think, I think that's a very fair question, and I think it's your responsibility to ask that question, considering we're asking for a non-payment of the transfer. So we are hoping to close fairly, you know, soon if you approve of this, so we'll work that out.
But you're okay if the town attorney, we put something in there?
Absolutely. Yep.
Good?
Abby, this doesn't make lots 114 or 118 noncompliant in any shape or form?
No, so actually, the, the remaining lots, they're still legal lots of record, and we actually have collected the fee in lieu of open space for those, the two remaining lots.
Oh, so we already have?
We already have, yep.
Any other comments from the commission on it? I think it's, it's an open space objective of town, and the Land Trust is good steward of that, so.
Well, it's also, it's nice that it's contiguous with the section Holcomb, so Holcomb, and there's also the property at the top of the hill.
Right.
Re-access through Seth and Lucy Holcomb is required more recently, so it's a very, it would be a very large parcel of really diverse wildlife habitat.
And it's, it's a little bit of a different habitat than exists on the top of the ridgeline, so that's a big plus from an ecological standpoint.
Yeah, it's more of a field in a forest. It's also a habitat we don't have a lot of in Granby.
Early succession.
So much of Granby is forest, this is early succession, so that's, supports different species as well.
Yeah, I think it makes, because it's contiguous, if it was just a postage stamp somewhere, it might be better for the fee for the town, but I think this is, fits right in on the Land Trust's property there, so.
A lot of times, we have difficulty finding somebody to take open space, which is why we take the fee.
Yep. Any other comments?
Nope.
Rick, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you very much, I appreciate all you guys do.
No, thank you. You're, again, you want, this is going to, if we approve it, it's something you'll be doing soon, right?
Very soon.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's, we didn't see any issues with it, so I think if, just to make sure that it is deed restricted, because if we happen to do it, I think it's just for good stewardship for the town, since it was supposed to be either a fee or open space, so I think we just put that, but.
Is there any other commission discussion on this?
Well, I hate to harp on, I just want to make sure we're clear, because a direct question was asked, could they sell it? The answer was yes, and so, and then there was some backpedaling, so I want to make sure we're clear.
Well, I think.
It's going to be put deed restricted.
Right, could we, could we include, if we were, if we were to pass a motion tonight to approve this, could we include that a condition of the approval is that it be structured in such a way that the town attorney is satisfied that it's deed restricted?
Deed restricted, we cannot.
Or to be, yeah, permanently preserved.
Permanently preserved is?
Yes.
I think that's, that's the way around it.
It reverts back to the town or something, yeah.
Does that answer your question, Eric?
I think so.
All right.
We'll see what the lawyers do with it.
All right.
Yeah. So if there's no, all right, I'm, I'm okay with it, so if there's no further discussion, motion?
I move that the Granby Land Trust accept dedicated open space instead of fee in lieu of open space for 120, 126, and 132 Silver Street. Staff is directed to work with town attorney to make certain that the land will be permanent open space, deed restricted, and cannot be sold.
Permanent.
That if it's, it returns to the town if it's sold, I think, sort of.
Right, okay, so it reverts to the town if it's sold.
Maybe just work with the town attorney to make sure it's permanently protected.
Past efforts to ensure that the property is deed restricted from development.
Let's just, let's not even say deed restricted, let's let the town attorney decide what
Maybe just work with the town attorney to make sure it's permanently protected open space.
Past efforts to ensure that the property is deed restricted from development.
Let's just, let's not even say deed restricted, let's let the town attorney decide what that should look like.
Decide what verbage she uses.
Okay, so I'll revise my motion to approve the request by the Granby Land Trust to accept dedicated open space instead of fee in lieu of open space for lots 120, 126, and 132 Silver Street. Staff is directed to work with town attorney to ensure that the land is preserved as permanent open space.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion in the second as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
I recuse myself.
And Commissioner Luke will be always recused. Now, Commissioner Luke will be back, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you're with us now.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll return to item number eight, consideration of applications, where the commission has concluded public hearing. We concluded three public hearings this evening. I'll start with the seven-lot subdivision, Breezy Meadow on 188 Day Street. I know there's been a lot of discussions, and this has been a long public hearing process, but my, well, from the hearings and the discussions, that the subdivision does meet our regulations and is actually, I believe it has been modified a couple times to address concerns, but I will have permission discussion.
The one issue I thought we should get into a little more, because we only touched on it, is the, in the draft approval, item four, the placards and whether we want them, and both places are only in the wetlands area.
So I would be an advocate for just deleting, I think somebody had made a recommendation to delete the "and streetscape" buffer language. I just, we have designated setbacks, both commercial and residential, all over the place, and well as buffers that are built into our code. I just couldn't imagine signs popping up all over the place. Wetlands is a different story, though. I would, if the Wetlands Commission has already approved signage and the wet, to designate the wetlands, I think that that's what we have to do.
I, I think that's...
I concur.
I agree with that.
Same.
I just thought we should clear it up, so that Commissioner Myers doesn't have to change his motion three or four times, because there's no way we're gonna include that.
That's right. Yeah, I think the, you know, there were some questions about densing things, I mean, again, this is, is meeting the regulations, and in fact, you know, it's in an actually more intense zone, whether you could build more or less on there, it's not for our debate, the regulations are being met in the R-30 and R-50 are more intense zones than R-2, which is a lot of town. We talked about the water situation and this testing already. We didn't talk a lot about this access, but I don't see anywhere in our regulations that says the access has to stay, Abby, because, and I'm familiar with those accesses, they're in many subdivisions, and they're almost invisible. I don't see people parking on 189 and go hiking, there's a very steep, you look at the gradient lines here, if I'm reading these right, it's very hilly back there, it's not...
Also illegal to park outside.
I brought that up at the last meeting, because I was concerned about the access.
Yeah.
On the busy road, and I was assured...
There is none.
There is none, and it's just gonna be a walking path, it's not gonna, I thought it was like the one on Long Door Hills, where you could park and actually...
No.
It's not gonna be that at all.
We have a, we have one of these accesses in my neighborhood that was built as part of a more, more recent development than the rest of the neighborhood, I couldn't tell you, I don't think I could find it.
Yeah.
I think that's supposed to be like, not like the one on Donahue, where there's actually a parking area.
Not at all, nothing like that.
It actually provides a buffer between the house and the next lot, too, otherwise the house block could be there, so.
It's a good buffer.
Yeah, I don't see it as...
And I think we address the lot lines and the square footage, so. Any other comments from?
I'll make a comment, I think the applicant, when he started with this whole process, you know, he had the driveway, one driveway to three houses, we were very adamant that that was not gonna be acceptable, and then he came back once again with a new plan, which was, looked fairly decent, although it was missing all of that plantings, and we weren't gonna really budge unless we saw something come forward for this meeting, and the applicant has done that, and I think he's really worked with the commission, we've really talked about this, this whole application thoroughly, so I think we're in pretty good shape.
I would agree with Commissioner Shing, and we've asked a lot of the applicant, the applicant has complied.
I would agree with that, too, I think, I think none of us was happy with the initial application, but I think the applicant worked hard to meet our concern.
There's no other comment, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, we approve application seeking a seven-lot subdivision, Breezy Meadow, for property located at 188 Day Street, R-30 and R-50 zones. Approval is contingent upon the following eight requirements. All easement language must be finalized, approved, and filed on land records prior to the filing of the Mylars. Number two, all easements shall be shown in the individual plot plan in reference to deeds. Number three, no building permit for any lot shall be issued until the open space is shown in the approved subdivision plan as deeded to the town of Granby. Number four, conservation restriction area placards shall be installed prior to CO in each lot. The design of the placard shall be submitted to the Director of Community Development for review and approval. The placards are, are, shall be located approximately 50 feet apart or at closer intervals if needed. The, to clearly delineate the buffer area on each lot, actually delineate the conservation restriction area on each lot, the placards are to be affixed with, on a four-by-four wooden post, if the placards are to be affixed to an existing or proposed tree or displayed in some other manner, the proposal must be submitted to the Director of Community Development for review and approval prior to installation. Number five, the applicant shall reimburse the town of Granby for all payments made to the town engineer for monitoring the construction for compliance with this approval. The applicant will reimburse the town at a rate of $120 per hour for the service of the town engineer. The applicant shall deposit with the town the sum of $3,000 to be applied towards the cost as described herein. Should the cost exceed this amount, the applicant will be billed for the difference. Any funds not used for the project will be remitted to the applicant at the conclusion of the project. As used in this condition, the term town engineer includes any person or firm so designated by the town engineer or director of community development. The required funds shall be deposited within the town of Granby prior to the filing of the Mylars. Number six, an access inspection and repair agreement and a $1,000 cash bond for each lot shall be required to ensure that the erosion and sediment control plan is installed, maintained, and function as proposed for each building lot as outlined in Section 8.7.7 of the zoning regulations. Item number seven, the reduced visual streetscape buffer is approved as shown on the plans with consideration of the existing and proposed vegetation. Number eight, the final Mylar shall be modified to comply with the requirements outlined herein prior to the execution by the commission.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion as read? As soon as I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, next, next, as we completed a public hearing for a text amendment change to Section 3.8 in the industrial zone to add a special event facility? Again, I think the commission thought it made sense, it fits in there, so I really don't see any issues with it, there's no...
I mean, if anything, we've all, I think a lot of members of the commission have expressed concern that we'd like to see more of the commercial properties available in town rented and in use, so I think this fits nicely with that.
Makes a lot of sense to me. So let's look for a motion.
And if I may, when the commission considers a motion setting an effectivity of the regulation for September 29th?
On October 1st, huh? So, let me see.
All right, I'll motion, we approve an application seeking an amendment to zoning regulations, Section 8, 3.8 industrial zone, to add Section 3.8.2.19 for a special event space allowed by special permit. The language shall be three, Section 3.8.2.19, special event facility, which is the facility for banquets, conferences, receptions, meetings, presentations, parties, cultural events, corporate, charitable, and other social gatherings. Amendment to be in effect, effective September 29, 2020.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion as read?
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Yes, welcome to town.
Yes. Okay, next was an application, modify the special permit on the regulations for a garage for the overhang at 10R Eric Drive. I think the commission's very supportive of it, so I don't need to go to the discussion unless you want to, otherwise I'll take a motion.
I'll motion that we approve an application seeking to modify a special permit under zoning regulations, Section 8.1.3.4 for a garage in excess of 1,000 square feet to construct an overhang for property located at 10R Eric Drive, R-30 zone.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor of the motion as read? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, next is the item we added to the agenda, which is an additional member for the Plan of Conservation and Development Committee. Just to remind the commission, our Plan of Conservation and Development Committee is starting on next Tuesday, that our regular scheduled meeting will be, which is September the 23rd. We are effective now until this, this process is completed, we're planning on only having one Plan and Zoning Commission meeting a month. If that were to change, because we had a situation come up, we would still, we could always hold our zoning meeting for whatever issue it is the same day, but plan on only one meeting for now. We did not have a representative from the Agriculture Commission, Abby has been in contact with them, and they do have someone that they have presented, but we did not vote before, so maybe Abby wanna fill us in?
Thanks, Mark. I did receive a phone call that Ellen Whitlow from the Agricultural Commission would be the commission's representative on the POCD committee. So as Mark has indicated, it just requires a formal vote and appointment by this commission.
So if everyone's all right, can I get a motion to approve Ellen Whitlow to the Plan of Conservation and Development Commission?
I move to approve Ellen Whitlow's appointment to the Plan of Conservation and Development.
I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve the nomination, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Nomination carries. So anything on, POC, do you have anything else besides? We're gonna meet here in this room at the table here?
Yep, and we will have Zoom capability.
I thought we said snacks.
I was thinking the same thing. To talk to Mike about the budget.
You have a budget for it? All right.
And Chris and I'll go over the agenda for the first time, I was kinda thinking, Chris, we could talk more, the first meeting's just gonna be more of an introductory, go through the current plan, introduce the members, so.
That's a good idea.
All right, so next, staff reports, anything, Abby, I see you have a CROG workshop?
Yep, so a couple things I wanted to let everyone know, CROG is working on a regional housing strategy, and as part of that, they're looking at the region's role in creating more housing opportunities and addressing some of the challenges a region is facing. So they are hosting two workshops on September 24th and the other on October 16th. I distributed a flyer, it was in your meeting packet, but then I received an updated one because they had to move the September meeting to a new location, so I just wanted to let everyone know, the asset I distributed to our land use boards and commissions in the event that anyone is interested in attending, and it is also open to the public, so in case anyone wants to go. And then, I also wanted to report that 83 Salmonbrook Street and 603 Cider Lane are up for sale, so bids are due October 3rd.
I don't know addresses somewhere of those.
Freshies, and then the vacant piece on Cider Mill Heights that was deeded to the town. So bids are due October 3rd, the starting bid for 83 Salmonbrook is $225, and 603 Cider Lane, I believe, is $55,500, and again, that's a vacant lot, so we'll see what submissions we get in October.
Okay. Abby, does this meet the requirement for the credits that we need?
No, but thank you for reminding me, because I do have several training opportunities that I will email out to the commission for yes, so thank you. But no, that unfortunately does not satisfy that.
Anything else?
So, just a, just a question slash observation, or possibly just being petty, why does a state or its state contractor keep on tearing up brand-new pavement that they put down?
Yeah, they're, I know, yeah, they're correcting some issues.
More issues?
Yeah. I don't know if they fully corrected the issues before.
Because they love grinding up pavement and repaving it.
I know.
Preparing track.
Yeah, and I know that you've heard plenty of feedback related to the work that they did, but I wanna just state again that when they did grind up the roadway in front of the police station in Town Hall, they just never came back and realigned it, and that, those missing lines caused chaos, because people start to queue up for the two lanes, then the lines disappear, and then they start drifting, and then they queue back up again, it's, it's maddening.
I know.
Yeah, I'm surprised nobody has hit each other there.
Yes, I emailed DOT in August, so I will follow up with them again.
And they also got rid of half the crosswalk by the village there.
Yes.
Where it's supposed to look like the fake brick, it's gone and there's no lines.
Yes.
So they just gotta come back and realign it.
Yeah.
And the timing is the lights are still, they don't listen.
Yeah, but the timing's awful.
Yeah, they've already, they've already...
It's the right of time of day.
They've already commented, there's nothing wrong with the timing, right?
Drive on it for a couple of days.
Abby, since Commissioner Myers brought it up, I'm gonna bring up my pet peeve, if you can please, I know it's my windmill here, but I'm still, when I drive by, especially this school season, and seeing the crosswalk sign in front of Station 280 blocked by telephone poles still, it's, I know you brought it up, but I don't know if the Chief of Police or Mike can, because it's just a safety hazard, kids don't pay attention, and you cannot see that warning signs, it's, I know it's, it's, I bring it up because it's, this commission specifically asked for that crosswalk, and the warning lights to be put in, and the state with no common sense put a telephone, put it behind the telephone pole.
Yeah, that was really stupid.
Right, so, you know, I don't wanna be here one day and say a kid got smushed because the warning signs are broken. So, thanks for bringing that up again in direction. If not, anything else? So, go ahead.
I was just noticing on the property in the center of town, they were doing a lot of that site work for the parking lot and everything.
Yes.
That all seems to be moving along.
Yep. Yep.
About the solar...
The coffee place.
Yes.
How about the solar farm, what's the status of that? I see that the nursery is pretty much gone.
Yeah, yeah, they've, yeah, they're completely off the property as far as I know. It's been a little while since I've heard from the solar folks, and last I spoke to them, I believe it was the end of July, they are still working on plans and submittals and preparing everything, it's just taking a little bit longer, I think, than they anticipated.
I wonder if some funding might have dried up.
When I spoke to them last, they said that they're still moving ahead, so, and we, the town will be receiving everything, you know, prior to, to the sighting council for review.
All right, that's it, our next meeting, I gotta look at the calendar. Do you have a memorized that, before October? It's October 7th, no, 14th.
14.
Wow, yeah, all right. So, so October 14th, the next meeting, again, if something comes up, we'll let you know. And then, the Plan of, you're all welcome to come and sit in and listen to the conservation, that's gonna be the 23rd, 7 PM in this room.
Duly noted.
I'll put it on the calendar. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second, motion, second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, we are adjourned. Abstained? We are adjourned.